This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome, everyone. Tonight I'd like to open up the February 16th, 2021 meeting, council meeting, regular council meeting to order. I call to order at 7:05 PM. Are there any additions or deletions or corrections to the agenda tonight?
I have.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
We are going to remove, it'll be Resolution Number, or Letter C, Resolution 2021-04. It will be on your next agenda.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
I'd also like to move Agenda Item E to the top of the Order A.
Try that again, JR. You broke up.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move Agenda Item E Downtown Trees to the top of the Order at A.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda tonight with the two changes? Counsel Williams.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the agenda with the two changes.
Is there a second?
I will.
Thank you, Counsel Williams. Would you call the roll, please?
I ask your question.
Joseph.
Are you, you're moving that up? Are you swapping those two items? Or are you shuffling everything down?
Looked like one item got scratched and everything else shuffles down.
So Downtown Trees becomes A and then everything moves down one letter?
That's the way I understand it.
Rick, is that what you want?
Yep.
Okay. It'll just help for when Stephanie is trying to keep minutes for it, but it's not. People are talking about different things than what she thinks.
I think we just take Downtown Trees first and then new business, and then everything follows after that.
Okay. I'm just making sure.
I think that's what we wanted.
That's easiest for me.
Okay.
Okay, I'll call vote.
Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Just to reiterate, great Williams, or Counsel Williams made the motion. Counsel Williams seconded it. Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Counsel Allen.
Aye.
Counsel Williams.
Aye.
Counsel Webb.
Aye.
Counsel Potter.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Are there any presentations tonight? Okay, if there's no presentations, I'll move right on to the mayor's report. It's my turn, the month of February, to select a, and recognize a citizen of the month of February. And I've kind of had this individual in my, in my sights, this ever came fruition over the last 11 months. And I wrote a letter last month in January, and I talked about the pandemic in the last 11 months, of what the city of Renonia has gone through, and how most of the citizens have really stepped up to support each other and be creative. And with that being said, I chose Marianne Odom. And Marianne, are you with us tonight? Marianne?
Don't think so.
Gave her the information. I was hoping she was going to be on at the meeting tonight. But anyway, I called Marianne a couple of weeks ago and informed her that I selected her, and we had a nice talk, and she had a really interesting story. Of course, we're all aware of when everything shut down in March, and then it was, there was a time period where nobody knew what was, what they were to do. And then it came time, I think in a month or two later, that it was required to wear masks. So Marianne had five sewing machines at her house, and none of them worked. And this is just another example of, of people just getting, being creative, and, you know, going above and beyond, and really, really a strong desire to help others. And so she borrowed a sewing machine from Maggie Payton, and she went to work. And she got elastic and hole-in material, and she started making masks free of charge. And I asked her, how many masks have you made in the last 10 months? And I was just astounded. And I would have never guessed that. And she said, pretty close to 2,000 masks.
Whoa.
And so that's almost as many people as in the city of Renonia. So I thought that was really awesome for her to take that on. And come heck or high water, she was determined to help out and help protect the citizens of Renonia, anyway. So, thank you, and.
Did you see that on chat, Rick?
Yeah.
Jackie is Marianne's sister.
Okay. Hi, Jackie. I think you're on mute, Jackie, I think. Well, I, on behalf of your sister, Jackie, I'm, we're so, we're proud of Marianne and what she's done for Renonia. And so it's my honor to present her with the February 16th of the month award. So you might pass that on to your sister, Jackie.
Hey, Mayor Hobart.
Yes, go ahead.
Marianne probably has not wanted to be on here because she's shy, and she doesn't like attention brought to her. She's a very good friend of mine, and she's also a retired pediatric nurse. And I know that she had made gobs of masks for groups of people in the hospital, nurses in the hospital and everything. And she did it on her own dollar. And there were kind of at the last, people donating material and elastic and all of that stuff. But that's an incredible achievement, a selfless achievement. And she was awesome to do it. So darn it.
Yeah.
She needs us thanking for not being on here. She's a great person.
Well, she, she's representing the best of Renonia, and that's why she's getting this award. And we're all proud to have her here in our community. Jackie, you can tell her that for us, at least for me. I'm sure the other council members feel pretty much the same, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you again. Are there any council committee meeting reports? I, oh, go ahead, Counsel Allen.
Well, the cemetery committee did have a short meeting. Couple of new members. It was more of a training meeting. So not a lot of business got done, but at least we got back started. And we're going to do some, some housekeeping with reshuffling of chair and secretaries and stuff at the next meeting and hopefully get rolling from there. So not much to update, but we did have a Zoom meeting and want everybody to know that we've started up. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Allen. My senior board meeting last Friday was canceled, of course, due to weather. And so they rescheduled it for this coming Friday, I believe. So I will try to attend that meeting for just a little bit. So any other committee meeting reports? Okay, if not, we'll move on. Are there any topics on the floor tonight, Stephanie?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. Consent agenda for acceptance. Cemetery committee meeting minutes for November 2020. On page one, first page. And I'd like to make a motion to accept the cemetery committee meetings for November 2020. Counsel Webb.
Yeah, I'll move to accept the consent agenda for acceptance.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Counsel Williams. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counsel Allen.
Aye.
Counsel Webb.
Aye.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Counsel Potter.
Aye.
Counsel Williams.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Consent agenda for approval. City council meeting minutes for January 29th, 2021. City council meeting minutes for February 1st, 2021. Any discussion or questions? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept these two meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion, Mayor, that we accept the meeting minutes for January 29th, 2021, and February 1st, 2021, as written.
Thank you, Counsel Allen. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Counsel Potter. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
I will note briefly that there are some spelling corrections that will be made to these. Sorry. Counsel Williams.
Aye.
Counsel Potter.
Aye.
Counsel Allen.
Aye.
Counsel Webb.
Aye.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Mayor Rick.
Thank you. Yes, Counsel Williams.
I just want to make a quick little comment. I, I mentioned that I thought perhaps the bicycle tires might be damaged by gravel, and I would like to relate the experience that happened down at the pond. I got brand-new tires on the front of my car, and I put a piece of gravel through there. It made a three-quarter inch slice on the inside. So I still think gravel is kind of dangerous to tires.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any unfinished business? Okay. We'll move on to new business. Downtown Trees. JR, since you brought it up on the agenda, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Since I was the one who initiated this agenda topic, I thought I'd write a little something to read, and here it goes. I don't want to forget something. As I'm sure you are all aware, the downtown trees were removed a few years ago. I don't really want to focus on the reasons for removal, as all of us were not part of that discussion. I tend to be a person that looks hard for solutions to a problem, probably due to my years in construction. I feel strongly that our city administrator and this council can absolutely solve any tree planting issues that may arise, and really make a positive change that the majority of our constituents support and desire. Tonight, I propose that we decide to move forward with the funding of at least 20 replacement trees in our historic downtown district. I do believe there is real value in the long run for our town. Due to the changing demographics, we are on the edge of substantial growth with the trail system addition and the growing population, and also the rise in work-from-home opportunities. I sincerely believe the downtown trees will attract people to shop, walk, bike, and move, and perhaps move into our community. I also think that utilizing the underground power outlets for tree lighting would really add to the winter charm. You know, I drive through this town at 4:50 AM every morning, and quite frankly, it looks sterile and not inviting. I have a picture of 2004 that Mardo gave me that I hang in my office that is a constant reminder of the trees and the loss that we are living with without them. I miss the trees. I miss the shade. I miss the charm. You and I are now in a position to invest in our town's future and give back to the community. The funds can be found if the leadership looks beyond tomorrow. I'm not sure if you are all aware of the modern construction excavation practice of vacuum excavation, which would safely remove the old soil and expose any underground utilities, allowing for fertile planting bed along with root protective sheets that are available. I believe we have a smart staff and a helpful city council that can work together to solve any issues along the way. In closing, I'm asking my fellow counselors to support investing in our town in a tangible way that everyone that pays taxes will enjoy. Now, I know there's many more issues to talk about this. I'm merely asking if council desires, we move forward with getting some money into the budget process, or else it'll be another whole year before we can talk about this again. Thank you.
Stephanie.
Can I get a copy of that for the record?
Well, I'd have to do some editing. It's pretty scrabbled and stretched up. But yes, I'll edit it. I'll resend it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion or questions for Counsel Allen?
I just wanted to show this for a minute.
Okay. Josette.
So is it possible that you guys could schedule a work session to go over the potentials? Because I have a little bit of concern about if we're going to do something like that, the funding and what it will actually cost. And then I, are we, if the council is moving forward with this, are you set on them going in the ground? Because there is, I know JR didn't want to mention the reasons we removed them, but those are the reasons we would not put them back in the ground. And they're not just kind of opinion. They're insurance and adjacent property owner responsibility and stuff like that. So I think before we set a budget number or ask staff to put it in the budget, I'd like to sit down with you guys and talk about potentials and maybe alternatives to going down in the ground.
Counsel Williams.
I'm very sympathetic to the idea of trees downtown. I remember when I lived in California, they had some beautiful trees in Balboa, and they did do some damage. But when they cut down those trees, there was a, they were outraged because it was the trees that brought people. They were beautiful. And I believe, Josette, when I'm done, I'd like you to answer a question, and that is, how far down are the utilities? Because I know it's possible to put in perhaps a concrete box or something to keep the roots from going completely crazy. And if you keep the trees trimmed, the roots can be contained. So it, I realize there's problems, but like JR said, I think we can solve them.
So I would have to do a little digging to figure out how deep the gas line is, and that's related to the infrastructure that insurance and the gas company really don't like the idea of trees being on top of, because it's the main gas line for the city that runs in that planner strip on the city hall side of the street. So I'd have to do a little digging for that. I don't have an answer for you tonight, Grant.
Yeah, but I really believe, like JR does, that this can be solved with some creativity and ingenuity and all that kind of stuff. We can do it somehow.
Counsel Potter.
I think it's very feasible to have trees in large containers. There are trees that do wonderful in like 30 to 50 gallon containers. However, the thing about that is there would have to be water that would be readily available to those trees, because they would certainly need more water than if they were planted in the ground. And you can get, I mean, they're so far ahead of breeding small tree trees, and it's very doable. And I wanted to apologize for Mayor Hobart. I wasn't able to get back to you on what kind of trees. But, you know, I would be more than willing to look at that again for you, and also be on a work panel to come up with a solution. Because I love trees, and I would love to see, and I know a lot of people would, would love to see trees downtown. And it is a workable solution, but I too think that they should be in a container, a nice, attractive container.
Counsel Webb.
So we're talking in a vacuum here a little bit, because previous councils, and this goes back a long ways. I think even when my wife was on council, the trees have, the trees when they were in were an issue for this town and for the businesses in this town. A lot of the reason that they went away was some of the business owners were pretty upset with those trees. It covers up their storefront, makes parking less desirable along the street. You can't open your door. You're hitting a tree. You've got a garbage can or a signpost. You know, we're pretty cluttered down there. So this discussion has been going on for years, and even after the trees were removed, there was a push to try to get trees back in. But trying to find a reasonable solution, you know, and talking to former Councilman McNair, was, it was just pretty impossible. I'm always open for new ideas, but we really need to be talking to those business owners downtown, too, if we're going to move forward with something. And where does this come out of? I think technically, those comes out of streets, doesn't it, Josette? And we're pretty tight in streets. I think you can give people a choice between pavement and trees. She's going to get pavement. Just, it just, this isn't, this isn't just an easy solution here, folks. There's been a lot of people worked on this for years, trying to come up with really a workable plan, and they, they couldn't. So I'm not saying we can't get there, but I really would caution everybody that it's a lot more to this than what it seems. And we've got a lot of trees around this town. I guess I'm not much of a tree hugger, because, and after watching what's just happened to the south of us, a lot of people are rethinking having all those nice trees down their streets, because it's, they are still out of electricity because of those trees. So, and they probably will be till the end of the week.
Counsel Potter.
I have to say about the trees that were planted downtown, what, 20 years, 25 years ago, they were the wrong trees. That's why they were such a big, it was such a headache for the business owners. They put maples in there, large maples. Anyone knows that maples grow like weeds in northwest Oregon. They, it wasn't thought through, and they were also, the roots were part of the problem. I true am not, I too am not a tree hugger, but I'm not going to close that off for looking at other trees, small trees, small trees, or even evergreen shrubs that could be very attractive downtown. So it's doable. And I too am not going to close my thought process on that, because I think it would be very attractive.
I, I'd like to get in here a little bit, and I do like the idea that Josette has presented to us in a future workshop. I think there's some good ideas that could, we could all come to a decision whether, that, I know the decision we make out of that workshop will be the best for Renonia. You know, like Counsel Potter just said, they were the wrong trees. And they were trimmed improperly. There's a time and place you trim them, and there's a time you don't trim them. If you don't trim them, when the sap's running out of them, it'll stimulate growth, growth that you don't want. And so I drive by West Ford Electric and look at those smaller maple trees on both sides of the building, and they've been there for eight to 10 years, and they're beautiful. And so maybe you don't plant 10 on each side, or maybe you plant fewer ones. But that's all discussion in a workshop, I think, in the near future. And so that's, I think, the direction I recommend we go. Josette.
So part of my reason for wanting to push a workshop is there's a lot of background information that staff has on what size the wells are. And then we did work with Portland Street Trees to try and find dwarf or smaller species that would fit in those wells. And our wells are, to go in-ground, are really just too small. The minimum should be a four-foot by four-foot well, even for some of the smaller ones. The minimum should be a four foot by four foot well, even for some of the smaller ones. And ours are barely three feet by three feet. Um, and then, um, we just have some like costs and different things of what it costs so that you guys might get an idea. Um, I know Rachel Organ had pitched some container type trees, um, St. Helen's did containers, um, but then they did have to during the summer have someone that was pretty focused on getting water to them. One thing to, to reference JR is lighting up the trees, um, in the holiday season. So when the trees came down, the city paid a huge amount of money to put plugs in the light poles, electrical plugs in the light poles specifically so that Spirit of Christmas could light, put, light up things off of the different street lamps, um, which they, we basically spent a whole bunch of money doing that for them and then they never utilized that. So that's kind of my concern with, um, doing the tree specifically to light it because the electrical cost when we give, if we get this work session and give you kind of the information was a lot of money out of the city's budget for electrical, which I don't know that we could, um, it'd be hard to find it out of streets and still do what we know we kind of need to do for the community on the streets, basically.
Counselor Allen.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Hobart. My intention for tonight wasn't to get bogged down into details because we could probably talk about details for hours. My intention tonight was if this council wants to see something done with the trees, we call for a vote and we put 20, 25,000, whatever amount we decide into the budget, doesn't have to be used, but then we have this discussion at a workshop or two and figure out something to beautify downtown Vernonia, which I think we all agree needs something. And, uh, I'm not saying I'm going to vote for in-ground. It come down to all the facts and knowledge, I probably wouldn't if there was good reason for it. But there is other solutions and other options. So, um, that was my intention, not to, not to take up all night on this, but just to see if council's will was to do something to get some money into the budget and we can continue this in the next month or month and a half.
Okay, Counselor Potter.
Just one quick note, you know, the trees that they, uh, have bought for Spencer Park, uh, they've sold pretty fast considering how many they've gotten. And that could be applied to possibly a fundraiser for people that would want to buy a tree and a container or one or the other. Uh, if it's, uh, if the cost is the issue, you know, we could, uh, we could look at it that way. Have, uh, people donate money and they can put their plaque on the tree and for a family member or something like that. People like that.
Counselor Williams, you had your hand up a while ago.
Well, I, I just wanted to plant a little seed of, uh, in your minds about containerized trees. Uh, there are some dwarf trees that flower, but don't bear fruit. They're really beautiful when they bloom. And, uh, I, I, I would be willing to make a motion that we have a workshop to talk about this. Like JR said, we shouldn't spend all night talking about this, but let's have a workshop and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
I second the motion.
Okay, we're gonna.
I don't think we need a motion. We need a, excuse me, mayor. Do we need a motion to have a workshop?
No.
We don't need, we don't need a motion to have a workshop. What we need a motion for is to put some money into the budget in case we decide to go with the trees, it's in there. Uh-oh.
Go ahead, Josette.
I'm just concerned about you picking a random budget number because I think it could, if you went the fundraising route, it could be less that you pull out of the budget. Or if you don't go with a fundraising memorial tree container route, it might be way more that you pull out of the budget. So I'm concerned about without having like a meeting to talk about which direction and let staff get some money connected to it, putting an arbitrary number. I'm worried about that because then we're kind of moving the budget without kind of a, hey, we're looking for 10 trees and 10 containers or kind of real money numbers.
And as long as we have.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
As long as we have the work session next month, it won't be too late to put it in the budget if that's what council wants.
Right. We could get the number out of the work session and still amend the budget before it goes to the budget committee, but then it'd be truer to what you're wanting to do.
Are we going to get the number if we haven't even talked about it and went out for bid or decided anything yet? Then after we just talk about it, it's going to take another month or two to get a number.
No, if, if we have a work session and come with, here's why we're, staff would ask you to do containers and pots, we would probably bring with us containers, other cities have used, what those cost, trees they put in them, what those cost, kind of bring you the whole thing on a platter and have you guys work through it. So then if you said, yes, we're going with 10 trees on each side, we could do the multiplication and know what the cities in the budget number should be looking like.
Stephanie.
Technically, the budget can be changed until June 30th. Once the budget committee is done with it, which you guys will already have just decided what you want the budget commit- committee to put in the budget, even though you guys are half of it. Um, even after they're done with it and they sent it to you guys for approval, you guys can still make a change. If something drastic were to come up or, but it won't, it won't be pushed out that far. We could just wrap this up next month.
We could talk about it all the way through the process. You could tweak numbers.
Stephanie can, go ahead, JR.
I'm going to make a motion that we put $20,000 into the budget for downtown trees as of now. Somebody please second it and then we'll just put 20,000 in it and then, because I had a figure that was told to me was 40,000 to replace all of the trees. And I don't think we're looking at putting that many trees in. So I'd like to have a starting point to work from.
JR, a question. When are you available, when are you available to go to a couple of local nurseries on a Saturday and look at their boxed trees? And so, so we've got just a little bit more information. I mean, it sounds like a thousand dollars a tree might be a little steep.
Well, you're talking to containers or underground or whatever we come up with. Actually, then you get someone to do the work, a thousand a tree is probably even light. Josette told me one time it was $40,000 to replace all the trees. So my thinking was to cut it in half and not crowd it as much, but, uh, um, that was just my thought. Just because the money's in the budget doesn't mean it has to be used. We can always decide we're not doing it. The money just gets moved around in circles anyway.
Right, but it's extra work for staff to figure out how to get your 20 out of there, juxtapose everything else. And then you're just gonna, if you don't do it, then you're just un, does that make sense? I'd rather you pick out something and then we work towards what you really want instead of doing all this work up, up front of it and it not being enough money.
Well, JR, uh, JR, Counselor Allen made a motion. And it's still on the floor. Would you repeat your motion again, Counselor Allen?
Sure, mayor. I made a motion that we asked staff to put in $20,000 for downtown tree beautification, specifically trees, one way or another. And if we don't use it, we don't use it, but that gives us a goal. We don't have to do it all in one year either. If it's not enough, we can finish the rest in the next fiscal year.
Is there a second?
Counselor Potter seconds it.
Seconds have been made. Would you call a roll please, Stephanie?
Counselor Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Nay.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now, can we set up a workshop for the tree discussion? What are the available evenings are for that, Stephanie, when you think?
We could do March.
Try that again.
Sorry, we could do March 8th.
March 8th?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, is that okay with everyone?
I'm available.
Staff will bring up, bring all information we can gather.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to B, Planning Commission application, Bruce McNair. Can be found on page seven. Bruce on the, in the meeting tonight?
Bruce, are you online?
I don't see him.
I'd be negative.
Has everyone had a chance to review Bruce's application for the planning commission?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a general consensus among council that I appoint Bruce McNair to the planning commission?
Yes.
Dale thumbs up. Counselor Allen.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So I have the general consensus of the Vernonia City Council. It's my honor to appoint Bruce McNair to the planning commission, committee, meaning, committee.
I'd like to do.
Moving on to another. All right, Stephanie.
A little shameless plug and let you guys know that there's two more positions on the planning commission. If you know anybody who loves land use and development.
Okay, thank you. So we have one mother, one other appointment, appointment tonight is Donna Webb to the library committee. On page eight.
Looks like she'd be a good one.
Husband Dale says no.
I'm not going to hold it against her who or she's married to.
I thought it was Dale when I first read the agenda. So with the general consensus of the council, looks like I have it. I, it's my honor to appoint Donna Webb to the, uh, Vernonia Library Committee. Congratulations, Donna. Thank you for stepping up. I know they were, they were two positions short there, um, also. Staff report. O G E C Statement of Economic Interest reporting, Stephanie.
This is a staff report brought to you by me. I'll spare you reading it all out loud, uh, but this is something that all elected officials and well, public officials just asked to as well. Um, Josette, planning commission, the judge. That's basically it. Um, have to file every year, basically outlining if you receive any funds for your position. Um, even though you're, we have two new counselors, you still have to fill it out even if you weren't on council last year. It's pretty easy. You guys will be getting a email, I think around March 15th. I think. Yeah, sometime next month, uh, prompting you to file. And I can help you if you guys are unsure how to do it. But there's a link, it's super easy, step by step. Grant?
Is this annual? Am I annual?
It's annual, it's the same one you did on planning commission.
Well, yeah, I, I thought you indicated that it was every other year, but it's every year.
It's every year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. And those will be coming out via email on, on the 15th of March.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Staff report lease extension, VCLC. Josette.
Okay, so this one's from me. Um, we got a request from the Vernonia seniors to extend their lease agreement, do another three-year extension for the VCLC building for the thrift store. Um, attached to the packet, I gave you the original lease for reference and then the extension document. If you have any questions. Otherwise, staff's just recommending that you grant the extension and authorize me to sign the extension document.
Counselor Potter.
Um, I read that lease agreement and I saw that it was $12, the initial fee. And then it was, I believe, $200. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, that's $200 for a year. Is that right, Josette?
Yes.
Yeah. I was wondering, um, I'll probably get hate mail on this, but that seems pretty darn cheap to me because I know they, they do very well at that, uh, bargain center and they make bank on it very well. And I'm just of the belief that seems pretty darn low for rent for one year. So we might want to look into that. I know they're seniors, I'm a senior, but I, I just think they make good, the city should make good.
So they do, are required to do upkeep and pay the, all the utilities. They're not gifted any of that. And then part of the reason we kept it cheap was that they have to contribute at the Rose Avenue Building, um, like $2,000 a year for, towards the maintenance fund. So we were trying to kind of have them pay for maintenance on the new building to build up the kitty for that and not have them be double hit with maintenance and all the $2,000 or whatever it would be for VCLC, um, at the time. Ultimately, potentially they would move, could move their thrift to the other building.
I thought they. Go ahead.
I know the downtown drag is more attractive for the retail business, but ultimately come 2024, if the city was wanting to get rid of the VCLC property. 2024, if the city was wanting to get rid of the VCLC property or sell it or let a different tenant move in there, that's the reality. They understand that the city has an asset on Main Street and that it won't forever be theirs.
So the seniors paid for the awnings and the painting? They pay for all of that out of?
No, no, they just have to do the maintenance. So it's not, when it's something bigger, like painting the whole building, that, that wasn't on them.
Okay, so if the new Rose Avenue Building, if it's four or five more years down the road till they're allowed to move the bargain center in there?
Right.
Doesn't add up to me money-wise, monetarily.
So if you guys are gonna change their agreement, then you would have to vote to deny this extension and re, have the lease expire and have a new discussion of the lease agreement.
Well, I just put that out there. I was shocked that it was so minimal for a fairly nice sized square foot building.
Counsel Allen?
Yeah, I just have a, a clarifying question for our city administrator concerning the seniors. Weren't we, as a city, donating ten thousand a year to help with the meal cooking and whatnot? And now the seniors are taking that on too? We're not going to have to put that ten thousand out this year?
Yeah, so we are not, we didn't pay it last year and we're not paying it this, they're not asking for that. That was an interim when their building came down and they were trying to do kind of the quasi no home meal program. The city did contribute that ten thousand and they, that, so they pay for the meals program, the health and foot care, all their utilities, all their taxes and insurances, all of that has to come out of the money they come, comes from the thrift.
Thank you, Josette.
Any other discussion on the senior center building? Lease extension? Anyone like to make a motion to direct staff to go forth with the draw up a new three-year extension? Counsel Webb?
Yeah, I just want to preface this before I make the motion is, I, I think the city has supported the seniors over the years fairly well. And, and since we, we're kind of pulling back on some of that support, I'd hate to pull back too hard on them. So I'm going to make a motion that the city of Veronia grant the Veronia seniors a lease extension on the VCLC and authorize the city administrator to sign it.
And before I second that, I just wanted to clarify. I think some of our new counselors probably weren't aware of the amount of money the seniors are pulling back from the city. So af, as that being known and said now, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Counsel Allen. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counsel Allen?
Aye.
Counsel Williams?
Aye.
Mayor Hubert?
Aye.
Counsel Webb?
Aye.
Counsel Potter?
Aye.
Thank you, Stephanie. The last item in new business, waiver remonstrance request. Can be found on page twenty-two and twenty-three. Application by Terry Goodrich for fourteen forty-four Second Avenue. Counsel Allen?
Yeah, I've read it. And in light of what council's been talking about and our field trip and our futures talking, I'm in, I have an inclination to deny this for thirty days and in hopes that we can come up with a policy in that meantime. That's just my thought on it as right now before everybody else has a chance to speak.
Okay, Josette?
So I have a little concern in that he isn't requesting a waiver. He's requesting a removal of any sidewalk requirement. So I almost think we take it back to him and ask him to actually go the right process and request a waiver. Because the waiver says someone's still responsible for the requirement. His thing right now is saying he wants removal of all the side, sidewalk requirements, which isn't legit, right? Maybe Stephanie knows more than.
So two things. First-
Stephanie, go ahead.
Is the builder for a private owner. This is a flipper. This is a, he's building it for someone who owns the property. And then if council decided they wanted to move forward with the waiver, they would just make a motion to grant them a waiver of remonstrance for the sidewalk requirement. I think he knows what he's asking. He's just didn't type it well.
So why is the homeowner, the property owner, not asking for the waiver?
Because he's applying on the owner's behalf.
But then the waiver is for the owner?
It's for the property, yeah. He's their agent.
Counsel Webb?
Yeah, I'd have to question if we even want to start going down that path of having agents representing. I mean, suppose we can, but we probably want to be talking to legal there. Um, yeah, I think there's a proper way of doing this and I, I think we, we need to have that waiver remonstrance, even, even though, I mean, what would be the tricky part of this is, this is what we have in writing. This is what we would be okaying, even though we're saying remonstrance, legally, they could be coming back later going, no, no, this is what we asked you for. So I, I'm not for approving this at this time.
Counsel Williams?
Josette, this property is, is at the end of the developed part of the very north end of Second Avenue?
Yes.
Is there any possibility of that road ever going further?
Anything's possible.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, realistically, is that road, is there any intention of that road going further at this time?
It's at the other side. The other side of it is Rosie Heights.
And that's very cheap hill, right?
It's private.
It would run right into a trailer if it, if it was extended.
It would have to cross private property. Wait, let me check real quick.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, I don't know what the topo looks like. You, you could have the road hook into it at some point, but you'd have to buy off some easement from some private owners.
Yeah.
Where is the residence actually at? Is it on the, on this, on the rectangle with the X? Or is it where it looks like there's a trailer?
No, the X is the frontage they're asking for relief from the requirement on.
Okay.
At a hundred and fifty feet? About?
Yeah. It is worth noting that you approved a waiver for the property across the street. And I would, I would ask if, if you guys deny it on the, which I, I have no if you guys deny it because the letter's incorrect, should I be going to them saying you're not going to get one or reword your letter and send it back to council? But I don't want to give them false hope in thinking that they might get it if you guys aren't going to do that or consider it.
Counsel Williams?
Are the lots across the street developable? They are.
Yeah, one we've already given, you've given a waiver for. Go ahead, Dale.
Counsel Webb?
Yeah, well, and I think we need to, through staff, get a clarification of if we're going to allow agents for property owners to be asking for these. Probably going to need to ask our legal staff. That could be tricky.
That, that's not a problem for me.
And-
Have them, have the owners address it to me. That's not a problem.
Yeah, and then, and then, and so that's the process then would, I mean, I'm not saying we're just going to deny this forever. I just want it to go through the right way. And so if it's proper to have the property owners ask us for the waiver remonstrance, then that's what we should be instructing.
Counsel Williams?
Uh, do we know the identity of this agent? Is he a lawyer or a Realtor or, who is the guy?
He's the builder.
Terry Goodrich is a builder, a local builder.
Oh, okay, he's a builder.
I think if council's okay, we need to just deny this request and ask them to request it under the ownership name of the property owner for a waiver, not a removal of any sidewalk requirement. And then you guys can deal with it when it comes back before you.
I'm good with that.
Go ahead, Counsel Williams.
Once that agreement is reached, can it be changed in the future if necessary?
No, typically when you guys grant a waiver, it's in place on, follows the property until you require the street as a whole to put in sidewalks or you develop an improvement district that requires all the owners to put in sidewalks. Something to that effect is what would trigger them putting in a sidewalk when they have a waiver.
Well, the reason I'm asking is if there's so many developable lots on the opposite side of the street, it, it sounds to me like there would be a, a much greater opportunity for there to be children walking to school that needed a sidewalk. So I'm just trying to think down the road that might be necessary.
Yeah, it's kind of a tricky point because you have a process in place, but you're also simultaneously talking about changing that process. So he's kind of falling in the middle of it. One of the questions I would ask, and maybe Stephanie, you know this, are they building on one lot and requesting a waiver for the full lint frontage? Or are they building the house in the middle of those three lots? And so then the full frontage would be attributed to one home. Does that make sense? Because I think if they're only building on one lot and potentially they're going to put two more houses in there, if you give a waiver, it should be specific to the frontage of the home, not this huge parcel that then gets two more lots with a waiver already written in stone on it, if that makes sense. He's looking.
Josette, I was a little confused. I thought, I thought the, 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 the new place would be where the X is. But you're talking about the street, what am I talking about?
No, if you look across the street on that map, Grant, see how there's three lots across the street?
Yes.
So my question is, is this person building on one lot and then is down the line going to delineate it and sell two more lots and they got a windfall because they got a waiver on the whole hundred and fifty feet without telling us? Does that make sense? Or are they building in the middle lot and going to make it one larger parcel for a home, then it would make sense to give them the full frontage in the waiver?
Well, it, what is the builder applied for? I mean, don't we know what he wants to do?
You want me to answer it?
Question, Stephanie?
They're building one house, but a good portion of that lot is wetland. But that's-
I couldn't hear that.
They're building one house right now, but a good portion of that lot is wetland. So they might-
By the road?
But.
Is the wetland by the road, up, up near the road?
It's in the back.
No.
But it's not typically part of their-
They could still get three, three lots across.
So Counsel Webb?
So, yeah, I guess I'm trying to figure this out too. They, they delineate that though into separate tax lots, which they would have to, to build the other homes, then, um, yeah, I don't know how the waiver for the first one would carry into those new ones.
Because if it's on the full parcel before they delineate it, it could be lot two hundred. And then they do a subdivision of the property and they do two oh one, two oh two, two oh three. But anything that was on two hundred is waived. Does that make sense what I'm saying, Dale?
Yeah, I guess so. We would need to stipulate when we give these waivers or remonstrance that it would only apply to-
Typically, they're for a specific lot, not a bigger parcel.
Yeah.
I think we've done it a couple times when it was a bigger parcel.
Yeah, we want to be careful there probably. Especially if we're going to be changing this potentially.
We're right back to where if we don't get this done, it keeps coming up and up and up and up. So hopefully we schedule and get this settled one way or another soon.
So I think your guys is on the twenty-second is sidewalks, right? Yes. You're discussing it next Monday.
Yeah.
Well, it might take more than another session, so I, hopefully we keep going forward with it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Counsel Williams?
Now we want to push, oh.
There, there aren't currently any sidewalks or curbs on Second, are there?
Not on that, not from, what is that, Nahalem Back? Clots Up Back? Yeah, no, there isn't.
I don't think there, is there any, are, are there sidewalks anywhere on Second?
No.
I don't think so. I don't recall seeing any.
Yeah, there's, well, who is that? Somebody right on the corner of Bridge and Second. They do have a sidewalk adjacent to their property, but then their neighbor doesn't. So.
Now that, that's south of Bridge.
No, Bridge and Second.
Of course, cemetery to the right, up towards the cemetery to the right?
No, the lower side of Second.
Yeah, on the other side of me.
Second, at Bridge, that, that owner has sidewalk around the whole perimeter of their property. But nothing on this block, Grant, is what I was trying to say.
Yeah, okay.
So let me kind of summarize this a little bit. It would, right at this point, be in the council's best interest to deny this sidewalk request. Removal tonight and then possibly a waiver of remonstrance comes forward in the, in the future for this piece of property and we can deal with it then? Would be the best way to do it.
I would say we're just going to ask, we're going to tell them it's denied because it does not fit the waiver request standard. Have them reapply the owner of the property for a Have them reapply the owner of the property for a waiver of remonstrance for their parcel. Have them reapply with the right protocol, yeah.
Yeah. So does anyone like to make the motion to, to deny this request tonight? Counselor Webb?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we deny the request for the removal of any sidewalk requirements on this project on Second Avenue from Terry Goodrich. And that we instruct the parties to the proper way of applying for a waiver of remonstrance.
Yeah. Thank you Counselor Webb, is there a second? Counselor Williams.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you Counselor Williams, would you call the roll please Stephanie?
Counselor Williams?
Hi.
Counselor Allen?
Hi.
Counselor Potter?
Hi.
Counselor Webb?
Hi.
Mayor Hobart?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you Stephanie. This is from the department's Chief Connor.
The chief unfortunately isn't on our meeting tonight. He's gonna have to catch up with you and do his report at your next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance is resolution, second reading, ordinance 928. An ordinance of the city of Vernonia repealing all ordinances related to the rules and regulations of the Vernonia Memorial Cemetery and providing a revised method for enactment and codification of rules and regulations for the Vernonia Memorial Cemetery.
I'm bringing this forward each night. You guys did do the first and second reading at the last meeting. However, in drafting the minutes, I realized that, was reminded that Counselor Williams voted against it. And if there is someone who's against it, then it cannot be adopted at the same meeting. So this is all in the process.
Thank you Stephanie.
Stephanie, I have a question. Didn't we vote twice?
Yeah.
The first time I, I, I said no, and the second time I said yes.
Yes, but it was improper for you to have the second vote. We need to have that vote at this meeting.
Excuse me.
So would anyone like to make a motion to for the second reading for ordinance 928? Counselor Allen?
I'll make a motion that we accept ordinance 928, an ordinance of the city of Vernonia repealing all ordinances related to the rules and regulations of the Vernonia Memorial Cemetery and providing a revised method for enactment and codification of rules and regulations for the Vernonia Memorial Cemetery.
Is there a second? Counselor Webb?
I'll second.
Thank you Counselor Webb, would you call the roll please Stephanie?
Counselor Webb?
Hi.
Counselor Potter?
Hi.
Counselor Allen?
Hi.
Counselor Williams?
Hi.
Mayor Hobart?
Hi.
Motion carried. Would any counselor wish to have this ordinance read in full? Hearing no such request, this is the second reading of ordinance number 928 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Vernonia repealing all ordinances related to the rules and regulations of the Vernonia Memorial Cemetery and providing a revised method for enactment and codification of rules and regulations for the Vernonia Memorial Cemetery. This ordinance will become effective in 30 days.
Thank you Stephanie. And thank you to Ben again for all the work he did on this wonderful upgrade. You can pass that on to him tomorrow when you see him, thank you. Ordinance 929 amending organ 926, an ordinance of the city of Vernonia amending the city limits of removing three properties.
Okay, this is another one brought to you by me, sort of clean up if you will. When we went to record the ordinance, removing the three properties out of the city limit that you guys did, I believe it was in January, we received a request to include legal descriptions. Since that's, in my opinion, a substantial change to an ordinance, I cannot, couldn't do that without you guys adopting an ordinance, amending the ordinance. So while it's all attached here, really all you're including is what's outlined on the, in section two, should be, or section one, stating that the full legal description is attached. And then it's adding what will be, sorry, on page 35, it is the legal description for those properties. That's it.
Any questions or discussions? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to amend organ? Ordinance 929? Or 26, sorry.
929.
929.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Allen?
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 929, amending ordinance 926. An ordinance of the city of Vernonia amending the city limits by removing three properties with the attached map pages 26 through 35.
Thank you Counselor Allen, is there a second? Counselor Webb?
I'll second.
Thank you Counselor Webb, would you call the roll please Stephanie?
Counselor Williams?
Hi.
Counselor Webb?
Hi.
Mayor Hobart?
Hi.
Counselor Potter?
Hi.
Counselor Allen?
Hi.
Motion carried. Would any counselor like this ordinance read in full? Hearing no such request, this is the first reading ordinance number 929 by title only, only. An ordinance amending ordinance 926, an ordinance of the city of Vernonia amending the city limits by removing three properties. Nobody voted against it. If you want, you can do it at this meeting also.
Counselor Webb?
I'll make a motion then that we have the second reading of ordinance 929 as titled.
Thank you Counselor Webb, is there a second?
I'll second, Potter.
Thank you Counselor Potter, would you read the roll again please Stephanie?
Counselor Potter?
Hi.
Mayor Hobart?
Hi.
Counselor Webb?
Hi.
Counselor Allen?
Hi.
Counselor Williams?
Hi.
Motion carried. Would any counselor like this ordinance read in full? Hearing no such request, this is the second reading of ordinance number 929 by title only. An ordinance amending ordinance 926, an ordinance of the city of Vernonia amending the city limits by removing three properties. This ordinance will become effective in 30 days.
Thank you Stephanie. Thank you again for all the work Josette and staff our planner, city planner did on that. Cleaning that up, thank you. Correspondence, is there any tonight? No correspondence. If not, we'll move right into city administrator report.
Okay, so you guys should have a copy of my city administrator report email. Kind of short, the play shed roof repair guys, they came back and did a whole bunch more attachment and flashing and tar. We were set to get drone footage and then it snowed, so once the snow all melts off, we'll get more drone footage up above there to see exactly what's happening. I did see some water on the ground, but then I saw a lot of children today, so I think they drug it inside the play shed with their bikes and scooters and such. But we will be on the lookout the next rain and dry day to double check everything's drying up and nothing's leaking. But we'll be calling them aback, back again. Unfortunately, we found out that OPRD did not fund us for the skate park grant. And this is the third time we've gone to them requesting the skate park grant. We had raised even more funding. And we were not on the list. We did however request from them our scoring sheet so that we can understand what did not hit the mark for them. The skate park did get a very sizable donation before the end of the year last year, and the same donator is, has told me that he's interested in fully funding what we were requesting from skate, the state parks grant if we were to not be awarded. So I'm working to see if that's still a possibility. If it is, then we would receive that donation and then start doing the project in spring. So the, the skate park was awarded $100,000 from a local citizen in December of 2020, and that same citizen has said that they will fund the remaining 148,000.
Wow.
Wow.
Yeah, so, pretty amazing. We were hoping to not, to get funded and then not need to go back to that citizen, but he's well aware we may come back to him, so hopefully it still works out for him to fund it. Part of the issue with the state parks grant was in 2019, they really switched the SCORP, which is the state kind of criteria. They do surveys all over the state. They get from different communities what's important, and then that becomes the criteria you have to hit for being funded. And a lot of it went to trails and kind of connectivity. So what was sad is when Scott Laird and I went in 2018, I believe, skate parks were in the criteria. And then in 2019 through 23, skate parks kind of went out of the criteria and this connectivity trail system thing became more of the criteria. So we've told parks committee to be looking at potential things that match the SCORP. As potentially we would go back this year with a funding request for something that the parks need be, whether it's playgrounds, different activities for kids to get out and get healthy, bike connectivity, there's some options there that we may be able to go back. But yeah, it was pretty devastating for Wendy and I, the third time was not a charm. The awnings at BCLC are bolt up. Thank you to Tim McLeod and Mayor Hobart for getting those back up and it looks great. They seem to fit really nicely and now the people can stand under there to get out of the weather. Today we did our first meeting, Angie and I, with the police union representatives. For the police union contract is up for negotiation again. We put together some amendments and we're gonna have one more follow-up meeting to address each other's amendments. And then the contract would run from 2021 to 2024. And council will have to see that contract, review it, and then authorize the signing of it. So we did some pushing back on things they requested that really aren't in our budget or aren't staff-wide. We try to not have one group have these benefits and then the rest of staff have these benefits, and we're trying to kind of keep it so that it's not, you don't get everything because you're in the union, and then if you're not in a union, you get nothing. So that's kind of our goal. So seemed legitimate. Everybody walked away not super happy, which is always kind of the idea of a good deal, because then no one's getting their way fully, so we'll see how it goes when they send us back their amendments. The downtown garbage cans, so I know we've been looking at they're really sleek design. They were designed by Alan Hine, and they're basically a connection of two by two boxes, which is really interesting and really allows you to have a lot of room on the inside of it, but the whole shell is very sturdy. So Ben had redesigned the shell because waste management no longer ensures their employees to lift garbage cans over their heads. And that was taken out when they bought the new mechanism arm to load garbage cans via the mechanism arm. So they've been hounding us to get the downtown garbage cans redone to fit the rolling cart so that that mechanism arm can be used when they go to Long Main Street or Bridge Street and pick up the garbage. When we priced it out with the wildfires and lumber going up, it was almost $300 a garbage can and just wood. So Rachel Oregon was going, was talking about submitting a grant proposal through Columbia County Economic Team to travel Oregon. Some of it would do, be for some bike amenities. One was ADA fish docks that, like where someone in a wheelchair could pull up, so there's, she kind of had all of these ideas, whether to throw them at the wall and whether any of them stick or get funded, then they could potentially be designed. But one of the things she did throw in there that we were all for is for the price of the downtown garbage cans. So we'd be basically replicating them, very similar to the ones that we have now, just the larger size on the inside. Upgrading the tray where the plantings go because that kind of failed over time. And then we would be reusing or replacing the metalwork that's on a lot of the garbage cans. It's really nice, but it needs to be kind of re-flattened, recoded with the hammer, hammering coating. So we're hoping, fingers crossed, that she gets awarded for part or all of that design and amenities plan and that the new garbage cans can happen this year if she gets, if she gets the award. CDBG meeting, staff's having the initial meeting for funding with CDBG for the Springboard Sewer Project tomorrow. It looks like our project still fits in their criteria and requirements pretty well. And then one thing that's not on my report is we're moving forward with the class up, cutting of the trees on class up from six to fourth in the next month. We had been talking to the different landowners. One of them, two of them are okay with the cutting and are willing, because the trees are basically theirs. Each owner owns to the middle of the right of way. And they've decided to give them to the third owner because he worked for the school and wanted the forestry group to use the wood for some sort of forestry activity with the school. And he was the last holdout. He said he only wanted to communicate via email. And then I emailed him and he never got back to us, so then I contacted City Legal to make sure what's the last step I have to do to kind of do our due diligence if he's not gonna answer us. And so I'm, I'm sending one more email to let him know what's happening and then Legal says because we're well within our rights to cut the trees down and have them yarded to have them yarded to a specific spot at the bottom of the hill, um, then we'll move forward with that. So the class up sewer and then the Weed Avenue Storm Drain Improvements are two things that are on city staff's um spring project list to get those going. Um, partly because the Weed Avenue paving that we identified in the city allotment, um, Small Cities Allotment Grant from ODOT is part of this 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 calendar year's project. So we have to get that storm drainage put in under weed before it's time to pave in the hot part of the summer. So a lot of projects going on. And then Jeff will be coming or on Zoom um in March for your quarterly kind of public works update. So if you guys have any questions specific to public work in the town, um, if you would send those to me or to Jeff at publicworks@vernonia-or.gov, um, so he can be prepared to answer any questions. It'd be better off if we knew kind of what you're interested in hearing about other than him just doing a general update of what their work is at this time. So that's what I have. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I'd I'd like to uh open this up. And I don't have a question, but I would really like to recognize you, Josette, and and what Wendy has done in the attempts to get the grant funding for the skate park over the last several years. And you know, even though the third time wasn't a charm, you you've uh been diligent, you've been really gave it your the best you can and and plus the skate car skate park committee and all all been the fundraising and the kids. And it's been it's been a really neat project to watch. And I have to admit, um, so several years ago, I was kind of against it. But after uh the process got going and the kids raised their the money and and I I'd be completely changed my mind. And um, so um, it it's really good news. Um, even though we didn't get the grant, that actually it might be able to happen this spring. And it's just amazing. I love our community and thank you for all the efforts you've uh that you've um put in and and all the energy you uh directed towards that that goal. Thank you, Josette.
You're welcome. It was kind of a a glimmer of hope. So um, I got the email in the morning and I went home for lunch and I was feeling kind of down. And I drove past Spencer Park and there was like five boys on skateboards skating right on by the picnic shelter, like doing tricks on that speed bump and stuff. And I'm like, oh, we're still going. I'm it it gave me a glimmer of hope to keep going since they're out there interested, even if it was just a sidewalk and curb they were skating on. So that was good.
Counselor Williams.
I had several people ask me over the weekend about the snowplow. And I wasn't really sure what to tell them, except I said, I think it's broke down. And um, if someone was to ask me again, uh, how could I encourage them that it will be running again soon?
So um, our some of our equipment is ancient and the dump truck in which the plow is attached to is one of those items. So Jeff did have it running uh for a short period of about an hour or two hours in, it started making a horrible noise. He took it back to the shop and the where the fuel injection goes into the motor. It was sealing exhaust and all this stuff. That dump truck's been there been around for probably thirty years. It needs to go, but we do not have a replacement. So he's working on it. Um, the other kind of maybe expectation of people that haven't been around is typically we the ODOT does the main highway. We do kind of the big collectors or our goal is to try and do the big collectors. So Bridge, State, Rose, um, sometimes, you know, north, you know, off of North Mist if there's a certain but the side streets. So like my personal street, Texas, you know, all those side streets, those typically aren't all plowed by the city. Um, I think the expectation is that everyone thinks they'd be plowed by the city, but with streets having such little little funding in it for salaries, typically that's crack sealing when we help with paving, you know, doing that kind of stuff. This we don't always bank a whole bunch of money in there for plowing. Um, so that's kind of when the community comes together and we have different gentlemen on tractors or people with their own plows that kind of go do areas or the businesses do their own parking lots. Um, so it currently isn't a full-on plowing of every city side street. So that might be information to give someone to maybe um help them understand. I know that there was a Facebook post and one of the people that was discussing it on there um was talking actually lives in Roseview Heights, which none of those are city right of ways up there. It's a private uh road. So we we would never be going up there where she was requesting or asking about. Um, so it's just kind of an informational thing. I think people kind of think that everywhere will get plowed. My take, growing up in central Oregon, is if your car can't make it through the seven inches of snow, you probably shouldn't be in your car driving down the road. So
Yeah.
If you don't have a studs or four-wheel drive or something, it might not be a good idea to try and launch out of your neighborhood anyway. But that's just my two cents.
Thank you.
Counselor Allen.
Well, I have a little bit of a concern. If you say seven inches or whatever the inches were, can an ambulance go through that much and get to people's houses?
Yeah. So um, when it broke down, Jeff did talk to the fire department and told them, hey, this is as far as I got. And Dean's all prepared with winter uh chains and anything he needs to get to get to the people. I did talk about it before Jeff kind of took the plow offline because the truck wasn't working.
Well, that's one thing Jeff could bring to his uh meeting for me would be a list of equipment that is needed.
Yeah. I think even a smaller plow on one of the other trucks, the dump truck's nice because it's got such weight behind it, but it is an ancient piece of equipment that I think we, you know, potentially at some point should be looking to replace. But yeah, we can have him bring that.
Counselor Webb.
Yeah, Josette kind of touched on it and the city kind of does it anyhow. Uh, just through good citizenship. But maybe part of the solution for us, uh, you know, instead of just taking advantage of our citizens and their goodwill of bringing their tractors out and the pickup with the plow on the front that he did all the school parking lot too. Can can we come up with a mechanism, at least fill up their tanks? Uh, you know, we have this army of tractors sitting around this town. Uh, maybe maybe the city of Vernonia doesn't need all the equipment. Maybe we just at least provide them the fuel for their equipment when we have these events because we kind of end up relying on them anyhow.
Yeah, I'd I'd want to look into um making sure that by providing something, we're not then becoming the overarching insurance coverage for that person. But I think there's probably some mechanism. Um, but I'll have to look into that.
Yeah, I I know it gets difficult when you start providing any funding or anything, then the liability situation can come back to bite us.
Waiver that or or say they're acting on their own and we realize they're helping and something.
Yeah, because I mean, if we, you know, there is a certain expectation by the citizens. I mean, you kind of feel that that all the city should be doing this. Uh, you know, on my own street, the snow wasn't that deep. I just assumed I'd have it piled up in big piles. It's going to be there for two weeks. Uh, it mine washed out pretty quick, you know, it's just your expectation. But you know, we do get into what if it gets deeper, uh, just like JR saying, you know, as far as emergency services getting around makes it more difficult or maybe not as timely for them or as safe. So uh, just when we kick in, I I don't know, maybe we need maybe a a snow plowing uh policy or or some guidance of when we plow, when we don't ply plow and and uh, so I I don't know, it just.
Yeah. So one of the things that we didn't have that I think we with COVID, everything, all our kind of best laid plans went went awry. But typically EVO with code enforcement does a winter announcement or thing in the water bill that kind of says, hey, you're responsible for for shoveling your own sidewalk, which most people, even the downtown businesses, don't kind of sometimes get that's their job. It's like my sidewalk, if I want my mail, I'm supposed to shovel in front of my mailbox. Um, so there's some kind of informational things. And then maybe I notice that the city intends to plow these collectors, that the smaller ones are really not part of a bigger plan and kind of put something together informs the public of this is where we can help, this is where we can't. Or if we do come up with that stipend thing, if you're interested in helping in a snow event, maybe they register and sign a waiver and we get something where they can fill up with the fuel thing or something like that, get some plan together. We typically do a winter announcement and kind of education component. Uh, it just with COVID and everything, it just didn't go the way we normally do it.
Counselor Allen.
So after the truck broke down, did Public Works grab shovels and hit the city sidewalks or did they just go home?
So the Public Works worker uh that was in the plow was actually under the weather. Um, and we don't do sidewalks. That's what I was just saying. So the sidewalk is the adjacent owner's responsibility. So if you go down Main Street, it's each business. Um, so and then some of it is if it's snowing and it's got snow on the ground and it's like they don't they kind of wait till it stops snowing if they're going to do parks or something like that. But like Dale said, typically when you shovel it out of the way, it stays there a lot longer than when once the rain hit, everything in my front yard was melted. It just disappeared where the sidewalk part that we shoveled is still sitting there. So they didn't go do the sidewalks after he was sick and he went home.
Okay. I was wondering because I seen when I went to work finally on Tuesday morning or this morning, I should say, uh, it looked like somebody had plowed down from the hill here all the way to town down the eight-foot sidewalk. And and I don't know, I didn't know who did it, but I heard that there was then I heard there was citizens that were doing it. I know Ray Pelster works a lot on it. I'm not sure who did the tractor work, but it looked like somebody had cleared the path off so it would melt off for the citizens to walk in.
Yeah.
So yeah, anyway, sounds like a future.
The tricky thing too is that currently if it's a weekend, um, we don't have like perks, we wouldn't have Tim come and do time and a half. That isn't normally how we spend the funds on those weird things. If it's a weekday, then it's like no brainer. They go out and kind of do that snow removal on their normal hours. But when it's a holiday, which is more even more and more money, um, we typically have not had them go out.
Counselor Webb.
So um, trying to remember what we called it. It's kind of like the quarterly quarterly review or priority list. Uh, when are we going to schedule the next one for that? That uh, that was the process we were starting. And I was hoping that we'd keep doing that. It it was kind of a good goal. Go ahead, Josette.
Are you talking about the one with me, Dale?
Yes. And we go over the.
That would be at the end of March. It would be at the end of March is the three months between. So if you guys want to schedule something tonight.
Yeah, I'd like to get something scheduled, so.
Ms. Stephanie.
So I think Grant, you came and sat in on that, right?
Well, I was, you know, I I wasn't a counselor yet, but I sat in on the tail end, yes.
Okay.
In December.
Right.
So we have a meeting on, we have a workshop on March 8th, Downtown Trees. We have our first council meeting on the first. Look at my calendar here.
Does anybody have plans for just a reminder, the last week in March is spring break?
I can't do it.
Yeah, it's kind of a bad time.
What about March 17th?
St. Patrick's Day.
We're agreeing.
If anyone, I don't know if anyone celebrates that or does anything on it.
I used to.
March 24th, that's spring break though, right?
Yeah.
That would be.
I don't ever promise the 17th if no one else does.
17th works for me.
Me too.
For Irish all year long.
When when the Parks Committee meet? Is that the third or the fourth Wednesday?
Fourth.
Fourth.
Fourth, okay. Yeah, 17th would be okay.
Okay, it's six?
Six o'clock's okay with me.
Okay.
Is this a virtual?
Yes.
When are we gonna stop?
Isn't it in executive stuff? Last time we did it in person, just spread out in executive.
Yeah, you can do an executive session in person.
Amen.
So it usually works out better if we just do it in person in executive and then spread out across the room.
Yeah.
Sounds good. The sooner the better.
Anything, any other questions for Josette? Comments? Counselor Allen?
Just a quick update, Josette, on on your last city administrators report. Uh, how we doing on the login? I know the load count was pretty good. Did we make some money on that? Do you have a check yet?
So I had, shoot, um, I haven't, we got a number of checks. I'd have to, I can send out an email with what the totals came out with um from Angie. She's not here right now, but tomorrow morning I could ask her to synopsize that for me with the load count. Last time I looked and it was before like the, I don't know, two, one or two checks came after that. I believe the city's take was close to nine thousand. There was a lot of defects, some of it that should have been intended for boards went to pulp and got defected, marked down in the mill, you know, how it does. But um, I can get you guys send out a report on that to you guys uh after I get it tomorrow.
Sounds like it was a little bit better than some people had anticipated.
Yeah, there's a lot of wood there.
Also, um, you stated that the 20 mile an hour signs were going to go up the next day on Missouri. Did that get accomplished?
Yeah, they're up. Yeah.
Great. And uh, that's all, that's all I had. Thank you.
Counselor Williams.
I have a dumb question. Uh, some of those trees that looked like they were rotted in the center, if you Some of those trees that look like they were rotted in the center, if you go up 10 or 20 feet, are they, are they good or is the whole tree bad?
No, the defect, the defect that most of what Mike found, the rotten part was in the first six to eight feet.
Mm-hmm, okay.
The mill did defect some of it that had white speck in it, but then part of it was okay. So it was kind of hit or miss.
Yeah, okay.
There were sections of the tree that was definitely merchantable, but it was way less than what we would love to have be merchantable.
Right. Yeah, that first six, eight feet, that's the big part.
Yeah. And I did give a waiver to, a volunteer waiver, Mr. Richard Meyer would like to come and cut a 16 inch depth off the stump that he can for firewood. So he did come in and sign a volunteer waiver and agreement, which will help us too, because then in the replanting, it won't be all stump though, there'll be some of those that are lowered. I think the snow threw them off a little bit, but if you see someone up there that's Mr. Myers, then you know he's got all the appropriate paperwork to be up there.
Josette, did you say, is he going to do all of them?
His goal is to do all of them. I don't know how much help he has, so kind of, I think it'll be, he'll test it out and see how much stamina he and his helpers have for that.
Okay, thank you.
Speaking of that logging job, I got a chance to talk to Mike a couple of days ago and thanked him for the job well done. He he went above and beyond the contract and removing all the brush and and I don't know how many dump truck loads of brush he hauled out to his, his own personal farm and to expose and burn, but he sure cleaned it up really nice. And so thank you to Mike. Anything else?
So I have we come up, have we come up with a tree list for the replanting and where are we at on it, Josette?
We have come up with a tree list. I'm waiting on Super Trees. I sent them the list of kind of native species we are looking for to see what they have and then kind of what their cost is. I don't want to totally, I want to be as fiscally responsible with the purchasing as I can. The tricky part is with all the replanting from fire devastation, getting any seedlings is nearly impossible. So and then when I can get in line for seedlings, Weyerhauser has a seedling kind of auction thing you sign up for. It is until March. I think we could potentially still get them in the ground there and they'll be okay and have enough time before it starts drying out. But so I did put in a email request to be on that list that you could get seedlings March 15th. I haven't heard back on that one. So I'm kind of just in limbo land because I don't want to buy all kind of bigger than seedling trees, but then if we're not going to get seedlings, at least we need to get something in, even if we next winter do the seedling part. So it's kind of up in the air, Dale.
Have you talked to Maggie? Maybe we could do a contribution to her program and get some trees?
Yeah, I did put an email into her seeing what we could have of the ones we are looking at. You know, we're looking at kind of none of the true firs, maybe Oregon ash, just some different ones. And so she's supposedly looking to see what they have available. One of the other things that came up was maybe next winter, working with the forestry program through the school. So kind of get the established bigger trees in place and what we can get working with Maggie or at a good price and then have the seedlings all come in of different things next winter. So we're definitely getting something in the ground this winter. We're not going to leave it to just set fall over a year or so.
Counselor Williams.
I know JR mentioned maples possibly up there. Are they in the equation?
They aren't, partly because so I think JR mentioned, I thought he mentioned oak. Did you mention oak?
No, it was maples.
At the top of the street?
It's just maples to go with the neighborhood because several of these streets are lined with maples, so I thought maybe we could put them in the line, but there is a power line there. So there is some other things to consider.
Yeah. So the mix we are going with, because we do have a lot of maple, we were looking at Western red cedar, Oregon ash, the groups kind of wanted to stay native. So that's kind of difficult because the native ones are the firs, which we can't put back in there because we're not far enough distance away. But they did, some of the other ones that came up were not so native, but pull up my list here. So so ash, the red alder is available, but then everyone's like, that's such a short life tree that do you put it in? So there's, it's just a, it's such a conundrum. At first, for sure, we're going to get some Western red cedar that are bigger because that's what I'm working with Super Trees on. The deciduous ones will be the questioned ones, right? What we can get our hands on. Yeah, Grant?
Well, I know if I'm tracking like JR is, you know, in the winter, those deciduous trees allow sunlight to come in and that's warmth for those houses. And also it makes shade for, in the summer when it's really hot. So I mean, those deciduous trees have a nice purpose.
They do. The neighbors, my fear about putting ones right along the road at the, at the top edge of the cut. That the neighbors, that they really don't like things that are going to grow and then become danger. They have them in their own front yards, which a lot of them have talked to me about taking those out now that the trees aren't there to buffer the wind. They're seeing what it's doing to the ones right in front of their homes. So I'm kind of, before I put anything nasty, I want to wait and see what they ultimately do with those ones in front of their homes. A lot of them had some people looking at taking them out.
So I think they could be strategically placed to where they wouldn't be a danger along the road if you brought them in a little more towards the middle.
Right.
So and not Indian file where they're all in a straight line. If you stagger them and in and out a little bit like sawteeth. I think it could be very attractive and also be advantageous.
Sure.
Josette, who makes the decision to take out city trees? Is it the people that live there or is it you or who, who, who does that? Because I've had people in this neighborhood take out trees before just for parking and then they move away and they're not here and the trees are gone.
But those trees are actually theirs because they own to the middle of the road, anything that's, any, any timber or tree is theirs to take out or put in.
With permission, with permission?
No, no. It's theirs.
Permit to remove a big tree?
No, not, not in Vernonia. I think in Portland you do if it's over a certain diameter.
Yeah, definitely.
But Vernonia, yeah, Vernonia doesn't. And so to the center of Louisiana Avenue, anything that's growing from their house to the center is theirs to do, deal with.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's the same way we make them responsible for cleaning up ditches and all that because that's also theirs.
Yeah.
That, that seems a little wrong to me for something that's adding character to the whole neighborhood to me because when Robin Basset gave Jeremy permission to take those out, it was for log truck parking. He took two out just up the hill for me and then he never parked his log truck there. And now we don't live there and there goes the trees. And there was nothing wrong with those trees. So to me, that seems odd that somebody planned that neighborhood, planted those trees. And then now they, people can just cut them down if they want to. That just because we want them to limb them. That seems like that should change to me, but that's my own person.
So that's, the middle of the road rule is actually state law. And it follows merchantable timber, ore or gold or mineral right to the middle of the road. The only, when you have a platted right of way, the only thing the city can do on that is build a road. So like on the Classa Avenue where I'm cutting those trees, those trees, if they're merchantable, go to the adjacent property owner that's they affront. And if I found gold right there, it would also go to them. And so the only right the city has is to put a road there for public access. Whatever sits on top of it or under it is the owners of the adjacent frontage of property. But that is a state law. I think Portland is around making people have, have have permission based on the size of trees. That's a whole nother process that Portland went through that we don't have here. If a tree is big enough, then you have to prove it's a danger and do all these criteria to get rid of it. But we don't currently have anything like that here.
Is there a history of really severe tree damage like they had in Portland during this last ice storm? Is there, is there a history here in Vernonia of those incidents?
I, I'd like to defer to someone who has more historical knowledge than this non-native who's only been here 23 years.
Well, Dale would know.
That's what I'm saying, somebody else.
I wasn't paying attention. I remember, I remember in high school, we had a big ice event, but I don't remember all the tree damage. I just remember the team from Klaska nine or NAP or somewhere couldn't get home that night. Everybody took them in.
We had a really big windstorm in 1992. We were, Vernonia was out of power for a week. And a lot of trees got trimmed on by Mother Nature.
Well, Mother Nature will trim them eventually, guaranteed, either the wind or the snow or ice.
Well, if the main
It would be a bummer.
If the main trunk doesn't split right down the middle, you can really whack them back. And I'm just wondering if there is a history of severe damage in Vernonia.
Stephanie.
Well, I don't know the history of Vernonia as a whole. I know nobody's allowed to walk in my timber stand when the wind is blowing or it's snowing heavily because there's a lot of widow makers that come down or trees politely invited to the ground if you will.
It is dangerous.
Okay, any other questions for Josette or comments? If not, we'll move on to items from the mayor and counselors.
I thought that's what we were doing.
Well, I don't have any more. Counselor Allen, go ahead.
Oh, I think we kind of all had our say, but I just want to reiterate the thank you for all the citizens that called and use their tractors and shovels and stuff. I, I know Ray Pelster did. I've heard rumors of of Mr. Weller, Steve. I don't know if it's true because I didn't see it myself, but it probably is knowing him. So and anybody else that I miss and that I hope somebody passes it on that I appreciate it and they're just, that's the way Vernonia is. They're good volunteer citizens here. So thank you to them.
I to the fact that after shoveling about 50 feet of sidewalk, Steve showed up and in 15 minutes, he did more work than I did in four or five hours. And I was very, very grateful. My back was killing me.
Well, my wife has been telling me that Ray Pelster has been doing sidewalks and salting and stuff around the bank and helping people out for, for many, many years. And I think most of us probably know that, but anyway, I don't, I think he just does it because he likes to help out and keeps them busy and active and and we're, we're, we're glad to have them during those snow events like that. So I don't know how the other businesses did, but I think True Value probably takes care of their area, but I didn't get downtown much, so.
Okay, anybody else? Well, then we'll move on to action item summary, Josette. Oh, Counselor Webb, sorry.
I'm in the corner. You don't see me. Yeah, it was, it was a little hit and miss downtown there, some of the businesses, but I think everybody put in a good faith effort there toward the end and and I'm pretty sure Ray must have a snow blower or something there. I seen something with some tractor tires going down. Did our city property for us. I actually did the public works for him and sidewalk for him. As I was down doing my grandmother's, so I got tasked with that one. So I didn't do the one in front of my house though, sorry. Don't have one.
There isn't one in front of your house.
Did you say you did the public works director's house?
Yeah, the public works for him in his house, yeah. They're just, I did all of his and I did the grandma's and there was just a little short stretch and I just couldn't, I just couldn't help myself. Like, I gotta connect it. But I didn't go on down the rest of the block. My, my back wouldn't handle that.
Well, next time come shovel my alley. I spent two days trying to get out of here.
Oh, boy.
Dale, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for all the weather reports. For the, for the community. It's a lot of work and and it helps a lot of people and to make decisions whether they go to work or not or and thanks for all you do to help our community stay safe. Thank you, Dale. Counselor.
I've got new neighbors and when it started snowing and they heard it was going to rain for a week, they were scared to death. And I assured them that it wasn't going to flood. And those of us who know the community and know the history of how it all works, if you see somebody that's about to lose it, help them out and calm them down a little bit. It really helps.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Okay, action item summary.
Okay, I have that staff's going to prepare the information, financial and otherwise for the downtown trees workshops. Staff's going to send a notice of denial to the request of Mr. Goodrich and inform them of the correct way to request for the waiver, the property owner to request for the waiver. And then we're going to schedule the March 17th quarterly priority review and ask that Public Works, when they come for their updates, that they include equipment needs. And look, staff's going to look into what other communities, if other communities do some sort of fuel stipend or waiver when community members help with snow removal and things of that nature. Did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay. If there's no other business, I will adjourn this council meeting at 9:15 PM. Meeting adjourned.
Night, everybody.